Head straight up to you.
Wet.
Y'all get it ground up, back down?
Ground, we had to draw it, we wet it and we backed it. We learned something that's an old sand.
Did you get a copy of the document?
It's hard to work for me.
So all sand on it?
No, all commissioner about it. Two, three commissioners dug it.
Three commissioners dug it?
Put all the sand on it.
So you dug it back up with it?
And we dug it once and it didn't hold real good, so we had to rock to it and do it again. So we'll see what it looks like.
Commissioner Rogers, that's a long time ago.
It's been a long, long time ago.
Forty years ago. Maybe longer.
Should we get some money in, tax money in here, but they finally got the taxes out.
Oh, yeah.
You hear anything from anybody, any feedback on that?
Well, they don't like it because it don't show that they have, it don't get to two percent. All we do is extend the deadline and whenever they start doing the interest rate, you know, start penalizing.
Right. February first is the deadline now, where you start saying.
Yep. But like everybody want to take it off the income tax.
Can't do that anymore.
You know, but.
Can't do that anymore. So you got your taxes in the mouth?
Yeah, we always pay them.
You got your taxes in the mouth? So we pay taxes? I got money in the mouth.
Yeah, I don't have to do with all that money.
I was making sure.
Michael.
Morning.
Well, that was a nice stadium, wasn't it?
That really was.
Oh, my gosh. That's the most beautiful hospital stadium I've ever been to.
Prosper?
Yes. I didn't realize that town sold.
Prosperous?
Very rich.
Yeah.
The rich got moving out of Plano, to Frisco, to Prosper, to Salida, to, that's go go to Gunner. That's a fifty-two million dollar stadium.
Except St. College, he was the one that knows.
That football stadium was college. I mean, colleges would be like, oh, please, can't come here.
Yeah, yeah.
Years ago, Salida's population was about thirty-three hundred.
I know.
It's like, well, I bet Prosper wasn't that big either at one time.
Well, probably.
Really? Eighty-seventy, updating Young County. Frisco, different country ride after Frisco in nineteen-seventy.
That's crazy.
The farms, and now you can't find Frisco.
It's gonna play five schools.
It's got five, five, or six, eight schools.
It's in Crow.
You would you call it in there?
Five.
It's got some of the batteries, we gotta get closer every time. I'm not sure that thing has gotten.
I'm looking around.
It's goggles, like.
Like looking at them.
That guy's wearing a mask there, he's got a little gray hair. Did you get some right there? Your butt.
Scratch it.
Scratch it.
The Young County Commissioners Court has come to orders, sitting in record meeting Monday, December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty. It is nine in the morning AM. I'd like to note that this proceeding posted in mind before the town on fire, that all members of the court are present. If it's convenient, please stand and relax.
Governor, we just ask you to be with us today, guide and direct us as we conduct business the better we can. I always ask you to put your hand in on those that are acting, and we just ask you to watch over those that are in the process of of distributing this virus for this pandemic. Father, we just want you to guide and direct us again and work your will in our lives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored by this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, federal communist announcements and presentations, these no action items. I guess we'll start off as becoming quite easy, COVID-nineteen report. One, one thing today, the distributions have started with part of Pfizer vaccine. There are two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty doses allocated to the state of Texas. That will be distributed in the next day or two. None of those doses are coming to Young County. I believe the nearest county is the plan is the Caker for Wise County, Wise Health Systems. But hopefully, within the next few weeks, we will get a few here in Young County. Our test numbers, as of late yesterday afternoon, were eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five, negative for six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine, positive for one thousand six hundred and sixty-six. There are twenty pending, and as of that last report, total active were one hundred and twenty-five that had been tested in our facilities here, and the number is one hundred and ten for the Young County actual positive residents. There have been nineteen deaths that we've had in this county that's been treated to, called in nineteen since, I guess, since March. One thing I did add, I need to add this, we are live streaming to YouTube. Call-in number is nine four zero two two one two one zero nine, if anyone wishes to make a comment on any items on the agenda today. You have an impacted, or a four local options attack, a wildcat ranch for seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents of a dog fur, um, report. Also on your packet, Brazos GE Regional Water Planning Group is seeking nominations for two new voting members. Those members will be from the municipalities or water, and or the water districts. There's a slot open in each one of those categories. So if you're interested, you can contact me here in the office or it's on the Water Planning Group Regional G's website also. That encompassing is a pretty good sized area. I can't remember how many counties, I think about thirty-two counties affected by that. Next, in your packet, there is a letter from the Grand Crisis Center. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your expenditure and contribution to the facilities that they were occupied. They have, I believe, vacated the premises. They had not directly released it back to the county yet, but I don't believe anybody's in there. I'm not sure if all their houses have been removed. Also, make note that for binding purposes, the Mr. Wiley, according to local government code one seventy-one oh oh four, officer conflicts disclosure statements, Mr. Wiley filed those for Roy's Recycling and Don's Mutant Service. According to that statute, it's necessary that some of the conflict of interest like that file that with the record keeper of the county. And that'd be Mr. Ms. Harden here. Need to have that on the record, right here, Commissioner Wiley, and the big record, Commissioner Stewart as well. Anything else? Congratulations, I guess, to the fans there on a pretty successful season, although they came to an end last Friday.
Yes, sir. Real quick, I just wanted to let everybody know, twenty-third of this month, at nine AM to two PM, we'll be having a blood drive outside, so y'all get a chance, come by and donate blood and tell everybody else to come out and do the same. They're in bad need of blood right now. Nice hearing.
It'll be fun just to watch you.
Yeah, I don't. I don't look at them like I'm a lady.
You don't be here in the morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Who is it?
Carter.
Okay, that'll be here.
Yes, sir. Run out and park it like this, sir.
Anything else?
I just wore it up. Congratulations, my son, for graduating Texas State.
All right. You got a raise.
Raise your guns, right?
Raise your guns up.
There you go, guns up.
You get the job.
There you go.
Get the job, get them good jobs, get them rest to go.
Oh, everybody.
It was, they got two degrees, so probably.
Good deal.
Probably know one of our, one, our own anomaly is now the chairman of the Board of Regents of Texas State, Michael Lewis.
Is that? Jonathan, did he graduate early?
Yeah, he graduated here.
That's early in my book.
That's early in my book.
He did, he read two degrees of business and a A.G. double degree, see? He's seen the president twice Saturday, so. Look, President.
That you are.
Where in life?
Has that done anything with your pocketbook?
I hope.
That half semester got him healthy.
I don't know, I don't know if you ever give him one, even if I'm with you.
Amen.
Okay, let's, congratulations to Jonathan Rogers on his graduation. Item number four, consider county clerk's minutes in previous meeting, November the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Are there any additions, additions or corrections that need to be made?
Several.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve those minutes as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry file though. Item number five, consider treasurer's financial report, updates on security pledges. I think the security pledges are in our packet, and evidently we don't have a particular report.
Four million, yeah, four million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one, oh eight, he's on loop.
Yeah, that's. Got a little, little leeway there.
Sure.
Motion to approve it?
Yes, sir.
Second by Wiley?
Yes.
To approve. All in favor?
Aye.
File though. Okay, item number six, consider auditor's budget amendments, vouchers payable.
I have vouchers. Total is two-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, one thirty-five eighty-one. And out of the general is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, four sixty-two oh six. And included in that amount is the first billing on the Young County appraisal for fifty-six thousand, one ten. And the other half to the rural fire department, we've already given half of thirty-seven thousand five. Couple of the big ones.
I was wondering why that's.
Yeah, yeah.
So what?
There is Don's Mutant included.
I'll second that.
Yes, sir.
Sykes?
Yes, sir.
Noticing, we're second by Commissioner Sykes to approve the vouchers payable, noting to Larkin from Young County Police District and Young County Rural Long Bear Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Four oh one?
Yes.
Do we need a written treasurer's report?
Yes, may I do that?
That's all we need.
Yeah.
We did that.
I'll do the.
We did the. Security button.
Security button.
Do we need a treasurer?
Why did that all in one motion?
Yeah.
Did?
Yeah.
Is that four oh one, my book? Item number seven, it discusses, consider employee bonds. Carol L. Smith, deputy tax collector, for five thousand dollars. Wiley?
Aye.
Rogers? To approve the bond as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, it's considered extension agents' request for reimbursement, King Baron, four oh four forty-eight, and Savannah Williams, seven oh four thirty-eight.
I believe we approved the reimbursement as requested.
Sir? Sykes, Wiley? Motion by Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Wiley to approve reimbursement as presented. King Baron, four oh four forty-eight, Savannah Williams, seven oh four thirty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number nine, this, I'll read you this little letter here. I think it's all in your packet, I think that these court approached the board, I think, to play, see everybody on that. Package, the letter says, dear judge, on Wednesday, December the ninth, two thousand twenty, we received bids for Low Water Supply Corporation, CDVGTCDP grant project. I have attached tabulations, bids received for your review. The low bidder for the base bid was Bose Construction of Wichita Falls. We have worked with this contractor for many years, and I recommend that the county accept their bid. The Low Water Supply met last night and decided that they would like to proceed with the base bid and alternate seed. And I would ask to sample motion for you to utilize or you're making in regard to this project, not monetize that slightly from just exactly what it includes, and provided you won't break that motion.
In regard to the civil bid received in open on this end of night, twenty twenty, the Young County corporate jury room pertaining to the CDVGTCDP grant, project number seven two one nine four eight one, for water improvements of Low Water Supply Corporation. And as reviewing the due consideration, I move that we accept the base bid of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, and an alternate bid, seed, of a hundred and three thousand, ninety-five dollars and fifty cents, submitted by Bold Construction Company, Wichita Falls, Texas.
I'll second that, okay. And I have a little.
Did you say Old W L D?
B O W L D S.
Okay.
Bold Souls.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's an impound. Four deal, I think, through that, not our deal, but pounds and some.
Just drawn out, hasn't it?
That's the dot on the seventh, now we get started?
We're, they said that we start that first year.
But this releases, then we get started?
This releases.
It's been what, two years?
Well, it's really, if on the deadline, it had to be done by the end of this month, so they've been kind of ready to defeat.
At that bid opening, there was two representatives from North Texas, and a representative, one contractor, and a representative of the court, and Commissioner Wiley. Level on mission nine, so. Very good. I wish you'd went on that project.
Is that, is that a grant, or is it, is that a grant, or is it co-op, someone?
It's great.
Right, CDVG, CDVG grant.
So there's no expected. Matching funds?
Yes, there is matching.
There is matching, yes.
Maybe it's twenty percent matching fund. Twenty percent matching fund.
Yeah.
Item number ten, it's considered, discussed, consider West Texas County Justice and Commissioner Association annual membership dues, two hundred dollars. So, factor there, suspect that we'll all lose that.
Second.
Wiley, the Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
The motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Pruitt, to approve the two hundred dollar dues, annual dues, to West Texas County Justice and Commissioner Association as in the West. All in favor?
Aye. Point of information, Judge, is this gonna be one of those organizations that's gonna be subject to this P twenty-nine when it comes back up the next session?
It could be.
Could be. You guys remember that we started, that was S B two thirty-four, this one? That's why.
S B two thirty-four.
Is that the vision number?
Yeah. He's already pre-piled it.
Who filed it?
Paul. Commissioner Paul.
Has it been changed anyway, though?
Well, I haven't read the bill at this, I just read where he had pre-piled it. I believe it's two thirty-four, S B two thirty-four, which is sister, I guess, sister bill, twenty-nine. It filed in the last.
Failed in the committee, right?
Yeah, well, it failed on third ring.
Third ring.
So, thank you.
Something's got to reach up three times, it seems like.
It's amazing, it passes twice and then fails on the third. Something came up.
Yeah.
Maybe our pressure felt a little bit.
Could.
Maybe our lobbying, as they're trying to keep us from having, felt a little bit.
My concern in this section is what they, they haven't said we, we're going to public. So, that's one of the concerns I had about the city.
We continue to work against that particular bill to try to get a thesis. Try to take our voice away, man.
All right.
By Mr. Sheriff, surprise, if that comes, he's gonna give us a faculty report, jail, sheriff's office, or one of the other, both.
Both.
Well, I think I have one.
Would we ever tell?
Yes. Okay. Then we'll just.
I'll do this one.
Sure.
Thank you, Senator.
Civil matters are picking up.
I'm sorry?
Civil matters are picking up.
Imagine that. Just the season.
Well, twenty twenty, I get on. Yeah, everything is kind of, we were busy last month. Eight, three total calls for service. Twenty-three arrests, pretty active, you know, the traffic stops, two-hundred-and-ninety-two. Even if you look at the amount of illegal narcotics was even up last month, so. You know, these guys been really busy doing the job and taking care of business, so.
They want the T H C, isn't it?
It's a lot of T H C. It's one thing. Sorry? A lot of it is passing through town, a lot of, like, most of that T H C stuff, there was fifteen hundred grams of it, was off of one person coming from out of town.
Coming through town?
Coming back town, through. Coming through town, driving off, probably, he lived in another county.
Well, maybe a while back, you know. Mr. Rogers, word. Did the dog give any activity here?
We did. The whole bottom right there on the K-nine deployments was five, there was five arrests off of the K-nine deployments, and the seizures were two ounce of pill to group one. One gram was methamphetamine, the other gram was heroin. And the pill to group three, one ounce was marijuana.
Where is cocaine going?
It's, it's, yeah, it's still here. We, in fact, we arrested one person with cocaine this, this last month. And we arrested another one this month. So, they're definitely out there doing the job, so. And on the jail side, we have sixty-one to date. We, we're a little busier this last month also, because we had more transports, we had juvenile transports, had two, and I think we've already done at least that many or not more this month.
Really?
Yeah. And we've.
M H M R.
M H M R, we had three to the dentist. Transport was busy, they've been busy this month too as well.
Mental health issues have gotten busier?
Sorry?
Mental health issues have.
Usually in December.
Busier? Is the stress of the season?
I don't think it's gotten any busier. I think we've just been that way all year, I mean.
Did you even pick up?
Yeah, there was.
Wasn't so bad, you didn't have two or three?
Well, we, we had M H M R, our, it depends. Because I'd say probably at least fifty percent, and that's just on the light side, are all M H M R patients. And they just, maybe they don't go, you know, to the open, they talk to them on the phone, that's how they're doing all their business right now anyway, most of it.
I think that's important, that our public knows that half of your prisoners are M H M R patients.
Absolutely. Sometimes it's, it was even more of a higher average. Absolutely, uh, sometimes it was even more of a higher average than that, than that, but, uh, you know, we, if you can.
So county jails continue to be the major mental institutions in Texas?
Oh, absolutely.
I thought it was interesting that somebody was running to get through, didn't know what the most expensive.
High on our budget.
High on our budget and, and concern.
Yeah. Well, and it would be a lot higher too, I mean, if you could, you can tell, I mean, we're not, we're still not taking a lot of classes right now. So.
The best to do with COVID, right?
Absolutely, it is. We're still using that one wing as a isolation quarantine.
So you got any?
Any of it?
Any, you got any positive results of it?
No, we've only had that one, and that was an employee.
Yeah. Don't ask.
Don't ask that question.
Matt asked you.
Does anybody have any questions on?
Who's it, who's it to counties, Throckmorton and Baylor?
Mm-hmm. Do I have one more thing we need to talk about, if y'all don't have any other questions? Alright, so, we had a little, and I shouldn't say little, cause it's, had a fender, bender in Walmart parking lot. That's ended up costing, so far, he hit a pole going about twenty mile an hour on the driver's side. I just got an update on the bill today. They're gonna have the frame was bent, and it's gonna cost a total of thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars to fix. And that's to repair the frame, everything. The new one?
The new.
The new.
So it's only twenty-five percent of the value of the car?
We've already turned it into the insurance and gotten a check for nine thousand, I believe.
That was the first, yeah, that was the first bid they turned in, like, two weeks ago, a week ago.
Fastest pole gone?
How fast was the pole going? I watched the video, and it doesn't look like it, and if we're gonna go and pull, the cops, so you can see how it has up to the impact that it was going. But it doesn't look like he was going over twenty mile an hour when he hit. And when I talked to Roger, he said, the reason it was, cause it had that, the one of the big bumpers on the front. But it get that too, on that one end.
Yeah, so it just pushed it all the way back.
His name did too. But it hit that, he said it hit that tire more than anything, and that's, it, it broke all the tie rods on it and all that, that's when it, then.
It's all undercarried damage, you do?
Yeah.
What are you chasing, sir, Bobby, in the parking lot?
He said it was.
Cat. Does one of your programs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You got some corrective action on that. What time?
Yes.
What time did I go?
I can't remember, Judge, I'd have to go back and look, I think it was appro- approximately eight o'clock, about. And, and it was one of the small poles. That, uh, has the, what lane it is, like lane eight, two eight, whatever.
Wasn't a light pole?
No.
Hair pole?
Nope.
Really? Wow. That's all, huh?
So, giving y'all a heads up.
So we can receive another one, three four hundred dollars, three one thousand?
Yes, well, as soon as we get that estimate on the frame, we'll turn it in.
Was he pursued? Was that?
No, he was, he was, he was there, uh, it was on, I think, the night before or after Thanksgiving. And he was in the parking lot doing, uh, security for them, where Walmart had closed. And he was just riding around. When he turned, he turned and, I have, I don't understand how to explain it. But yes, to answer your question, there is corrective actions ongoing.
Mike, you think it'll hurt the title on that car?
It won't hurt the title, because Texas still does not have that reporting method that you see on TV, whatever.
I like to pick up.
Yeah, it will not show up on it at all. You know, not that you shouldn't explain to people when you sell it that it did have an accident. But, if we, if we sell it in a bidding situation, I don't think we'll ever have any problem with it. If Skidmore's repaired, it, Skidmore's very competent.
Yes.
They can repair it. The reason people like Skidmore exist, because they can't be fixed, and they'll tell you when something can't be fixed.
Well, so that was my whole deal, from when I talked to him Friday afternoon, Friday evening, before quitting time, he had told me that it was bent, but today he's calling and telling me, the more he thought about it, that, that frame probably just needs to be replaced. And I trust Roger to make the right decision.
Right. You understand that the frames are a lot lighter than they used to be?
The accident.
But it's to absorb the accident shock, the kinetic energy?
Right.
So the repairs on those frames are high, but they're not as high as they used to be with those big rigid letter frames that we've done.
Yeah, yeah.
Back when you cut pieces off of them, welded them back, that sure does look good when you're selling them. I think you're alright getting repaired.
Um. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of, why, why does it not happen, but.
Have you heard what it is?
Was, you know, was the computer hurt at all, do you know?
No.
Isn't that computer in the fender weld over there in the center?
You know, you talk about the, what the vehicle.
Control module.
Off the news, and I, I know that cops, he will tell me.
All he knew, no.
If he had it turned on.
Well, like I said, the automobile's computer system.
Will tell you.
Will tell you all that, yeah. How rapidly decelerated, how fast it's going on impact?
That's one with fatality accident or something like that, that's first thing they do, is take the computer out.
Did the airbags deploy? Good, there's another four thousand dollars.
Well, that'd be, you just would write it off, then, if it done that.
He had his arms in the steering wheel for some reason, it messed his arms up pretty good. I don't know how he got in there, but he was there.
Probably in a very crowded position.
Okay.
Thank you for the heads up. You love bringing that here, don't you?
Not really.
Okay, thanks, but maybe not so much thanks.
Oh, it makes me sick.
Yeah, I'm number twelve. Discuss, consider authorization of email from Mr. Tommy Hasty, giving permission for culvert installation access dirt to be placed on property, as you see in your package. Like this.
Yes, sir, uh, I thought it best to make the, apprise the court of his request. I asked him to give me written permission through an email to do that, when, this was, this was a call that came from Jimmy. Guy requested this culvert from him, not realizing it was precinct one and not precinct four. It's a sixty-foot wide entry culvert. And so we dug a lot of dirt up, but we didn't put any dirt to speak of on his property, it all went back into the, back into the hole and uncovered it. So, it's installed, uh, there is some culvert cleaning that needs to be done, there's a sandy field at the top of that hill that has washed a lot of sand in the ditch and needs to be cleaned up. So that will be a good place for us to put that excess dirt out of those ditches when we do that. And we've got his permission to do that, so it'll keep us from having to haul that dirt.
Where is it located?
It is located six tenths of a mile west off of Red Top Road on LC Young. On the north side of the road.
Can you talk about the river?
Not too far, just right there, just before you get to, uh, Mr. Hasty's place. Yeah. Right there, kinda where that pavement that they had put down. Ends, right there. I've never met this gentleman, Mr. Hasty, his sister is gonna be living there, it's an inheritance, those kids have got it from their father. And the reason for the sixty-foot entryway is that her husband drives a nitrogen transport truck, that he will be bringing in and turning in there. And that road is not brick, it's swinging out very wide to get in there, so we made it sixty-foot wide, that's probably the hardest entry. Sir.
What size, diameter?
Eighteen inch.
I guess that's two thirty, put together?
Actually, it was water pipe, one inch thick, schedule four hundred water pipe, one inch thick, going three twenty-foot sections together. It'll make very good culvert. I don't know where he got those, those would be good. Those, yeah, I did it, luckily, those things did not have rubber seals in them, and they were fairly easy to just slide together. We were prepared to try to lubricate the rubber seal and try to put in there, it really went together real well, and it's gonna work out real well.
Did it look like a culvert?
Oh, yeah. Except it's got a bell in on one end.
It's got a little portion on that. Got a hood on the inside.
There's some hood on the inside, yeah.
They, they actually have them more hooded than what I actually, cardigan covers.
Well, they will, cause there's some disturbance in them when the water runs.
No resistance. Yeah, they got two O rings on there, and they just, that, pretty good.
We did, we just picked it up the skid steer and held one end steady with the front end motor and just pushed them together. Anyway, Mr. Hasty's property has been, has been installed, and there will be a need later on, maybe, for putting dirt in that, in that spot, so. It's always nice to have permission from people and the approval of the commissioner's court to not haul dirt too far to dispose of it.
Okay, motion for, uh, approve the permission.
Chill out.
Second bit.
Okay, motion for permission, lock and second, quick, science, uh, to approve such permission to place excess dirt on the property of this property, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't remember thirteen. Discuss, consider trading two, uh, twenty eighteen light trucks for two twenty, twenty-one light trucks on a Bible quote, and consider financing through First National Bank of Wichita Falls, Texas, for Stewart and Cobb. Is Mr. Wiley down?
Yes. You got, you get a contract from him?
Uh, yes, so we need to approve this, and then he can sign it, and we'll ratify next time.
Yes, we already got the trade money, and everything works out like we focused on.
Motion?
Motion. We'll prove it.
Jimmy, do you look at the contract?
That's Morgan.
You made an email, it's in your, you look at it for us.
Yes.
And Stewart's gonna pay for that Wednesday, tell him I believe it's.
I have a motion by, from Mr. Wiley, um, and second by Mr. Rogers, um, to approve the trade in the Bible quote and the financing package. All in favor?
Aye.
I have number fourteen, discuss, consider policy application permit to, um, install history culvert on county road right way ditch line. It, uh, goes along a little bit with the thing, but I guess we'll have to act those separately, you will review that in the, um, application permit. See if it makes, what you further require.
I move that we, uh, accept the, uh, permit as presented, I'll second.
I think that the, uh, little issue was on I have number two.
Mm-hmm.
So, the culvert should be more proper, more square, and just a mound on its side, color, um.
You took that part back, it's gonna cost you.
So anyway, I, I'm, hopefully I got that. Like, I'm leaving.
That's good.
My second.
About science, hoping?
Yes, sir.
And Pruitt?
Yes, sir.
And approve. Half the firm name. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I was kinda thinking, the, uh, policy statement, was that included in the other?
Yes.
The new?
Yes.
Okay. There was a few corrections in that, that we're leaving this, but I think I done. About forming smarter.
I didn't bring you that.
You leave mine behind, the program factor, I think I done it wrong place. Okay. I have number fifteen, discuss, consider subdivision rules. We also got policy permits on that, so we're subdivision rules. Those rules and regulations were, I can't remember when they were adopted, but quite some time ago. And they're pretty, uh, expansive, I guess you'd say, when there are a lot of things. Some of them are pretty finished readings, and, uh, more. I have reviewed it to some degree, I am, I believe.
Those are adopted from the state's rules, aren't they?
Oh, they, yeah, they were adapted for our purposes, basically from, um, two, whatever that sign, either the, the code of government code two thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Something like that, instant thirty-two. So, I mean, I think there probably should be, uh, didn't really need to be reviewed around then, especially now, because there certainly, of course, I'm, we're figuring the pressure of, uh, few people coming into our county, I don't know, the water census is gonna show, but. And I'm not gonna show the most difference in population, but we're getting a lot of, at least secondary home, a lot of people coming up here. It's, it's beginning to show up quite rapidly.
We might think about combining our mobile home and our subdivision together, all we're gonna do is, if they get brought out, they don't have to go to different spots.
So they don't get the wrong one?
Yeah, they don't have to go to different spots.
Together, I think.
You know, and I think we need to add in there about.
Combination document?
The entrances, only, I guess, we don't need.
Two entrances?
Just one entrance or fifteen entrance, it only need two.
Any additional entrance that needs to be approved by the court?
Yeah.
Everybody, bear in mind that when, if, when if we do adopt the, uh, this subdivision, it's not necessarily that we adopt roads to, to go into our mining system. That's kinda, that's plain.
Good comment.
You know, they've got, they brought it to a standard at least, as good as, uh, the roads that are excess subdivision.
In Wise County, my brother logged, built a subdivision, Wise County made him build those roads, two specs, including the starch sewers and curbs out there by Cockville. And he had to maintain them for five years before they would entertain the motion of accepting them in the county.
They would make sure that.
They were constructed right.
They were holding up.
Right.
Wise County has hired an engineer, that all he does is oversee subdivisions. There's so many that are going off and something like that.
Yeah, there are just under those fifteen or twenty house subdivisions out there.
Wise County, the head is blowing up.
They are.
That's what's causing the heat issue.
They're all leaking that. So if there's anybody that's seen these things or experienced any kind of different things, it's gonna be Wise County.
Yeah.
Also in that code, there's exemption for acres above ten, more than ten acres, um, in each block. There's state exemption for, um, that the requirement's not there that you have. Like that, uh, probably think that anything over two, um, if it's not a relative or passed on through a will, family members, something like that, that two or more, regardless of the size, will be that played. I think if we've gotten to the court has authorities that make that provision, it could go a little stronger than that state. I think as it stands now, in our rules, that they do not have to, um, plant if it's under divisions or more than ten acres. Like just within their divisions. And there's a lot of provisions in there too, if cul-de-sacs, road streets, or commonplaces. If there's none of those, that has to have a license too, if they're putting those in there, then they'd be required to, like that.
A plant would create lots, is that right? A plant would create lots within the subdivision? When does the size of a lot become a parcel of property such as thirty, forty, fifty acres?
In the code, if it's above ten acres and it is, uh, might even if it's class, if it's passed on through, um, a will, family members, or something like that, then it can skirt the subdivision rules, regulations.
If you made a provision for pieces larger than ten acres.
Same.
Um, what's larger?
I think the subdivision rule states that we have, they have to be at least an acre lot.
Yeah.
You would think it is an acre lot in a subdivision. It can be bigger than that, but it has to be at least an acre lot.
But can we start controlling subdivision wise, a fifteen-acre lot?
Well, if they go that fifty acres, then that does away with him by having to do flats.
Were you suggesting that they may need to do flats on even those sites?
Well, if they're, if they're divided more than lots.
So a hundred and fifty acres divided in ten fifty-acre lots? You think we should consider having a plant?
I think it needs to be planted. Not. Our rules don't state that now, but I think there's gonna be a minute for it.
What about Chelmsford?
Quite about it. At least plant, at least have a plant.
And instead, the rule states that they have to send in at least two flats?
Yeah.
There's where we come in with multiple entrances, a hundred and fifty acres down a mile of road there and then six entryways.
We didn't quit talking about it and start doing it.
I agree.
We keep talking, we need to do it, we need to do it.
It seems it wouldn't do nothing wrong with having two entrances. And that, uh, road would be inside very good with our, the houses are set up in there. But put six entrances, they would have probably hundred yards or less. That'd be a lot of buildings.
Six entryways across the mile.
And you're not gonna know when you have that short distance, it's hard to clean them out if you don't have the right equipment. Cleaning. I've never had your water pipe again.
Yeah, I seen that. I made there, need to say.
Ain't gonna break that.
I think so.
I'm riding, ain't gonna ride.
There you go.
It's easier to work with than I thought it was.
Can you run sometimes and use grease?
Yeah, we, we had a can of Go-Jo hand cleaner, let Lelandage rub those, and needed it.
Okay, no problem. We'll watch it on that this time, keep it on lighting check.
Yeah, we need, we need to sit down and go through that.
Yeah, I'm thinking that way.
But why don't you have that workshop one day, or two days, and say we figure out?
Yep. What's subdivision rule? Yes. I agree. That's, that sounds like you need to have a workshop.
Yeah, I got, I don't know that it wouldn't be in our best interest if we reach out to one of our local counties.
They don't love a meeting and invite them to come?
And have them come and, and have input on what we're doing, because they have more experience than what we have.
They got more estate.
Exactly.
Southern counties to the east or south, most, or either offices.
I've got Wise County public. It's about this big.
Yeah.
How is it about like this?
It's, you know, two pages. I think that'd be something the first thing you're gonna think about.
The commissioner, a friend of mine there in Wise County, he, he wouldn't mind coming down here and
This, that, what's his name?
Ken Farren.
Yeah.
And he could probably bring that engineer with him too.
Compliment.
Something that we could learn off of.
That's good resources.
Okay, aisle number sixteen. Order designated David Wade, which will be for court convening regular term. This is on my December reminder list, but after reading the particular statute, eight one oh five, the local government code, it says specifically, um, physical year, so I think we'll probably
October, November, and September. September, fifth of year.
So. This may be a little bit on curve ball, but
Should we have done it in September?
We probably should have done it in September. This, um, order, straight, pass the fire, belongs to government code eight one oh five A. The commissioner's court of Young County, Texas, designate the second and fourth Monday of each month. She'll convene the regular term of the commissioner's court for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, beginning October one, two thousand twenty, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And I'll remind you that a term in one week. If not adjourned sooner.
Uh, is there no provision in there that if we don't take action in October, that continues on this previous year?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, so you do actively, actively have to put it here, man?
Yeah.
Okay.
If a regular term of the court falls on Monday, that is holiday commissioner's court will lay on the bottom of Tuesday, and that, that's been our custom there. Playing, that's how we operate for a long time. God knows, we've had several changes.
So is there any reason to change our previous way of doing?
It used to be that our fiscal year and calendar year were the same, and that, that changed in about nineteen ninety-two or three. There are still few counties, not whole lot, there are still few that are on calendar year.
Well, I would move that we continue convening commissioner's court as we have in the previous year of twenty twenty? I'll say it again.
Got a little quality. Second, fourth, Monday, March?
Monday. It's like holidays.
I think we should do it every Monday.
Second, fourth.
Stacy has it.
That lock can't be the big holiday model.
Stacy goes, no.
In the season.
We all in favor of that?
I sure.
Aisle number seventeen, discuss, consider burn and firework regulations. I don't know that we want to do anything with that, but sure do want to make known we'll, I hopefully somebody's watching too, that know that there is a considerable amount of fuel out there. And this December, Christmas, New Year's fireworks, please observe all of the causes that you can, because it's, there is ample amount of fuel. We haven't been having a good meeting of our, our account in the last few weeks. We received some rain, but at this time of the year, rain is not necessarily an issue, it's for them, it's for reach that we have.
Particularly if you get dropped there.
What do you think, Steve?
What's wrong about it? Few So if we take no action there, ask everybody to take their fireworks, and if they aren't allowed inside to the limits. That's our problem.
Any action taken from this court doesn't alleviate the public from their responsibility.
And then the fireworks, there's a lot of you, what, what we're calling control burns that, uh, who reported this, got out of control.
Yeah, control burn.
I invite you
But they leave them.
Good, good, now, you don't do that one, you don't, don't at all.
It was heavy down, we started the fire, it was mud blown, and all of a sudden we, uh,
It sure enough did a little bit blow it. Yeah, no Murphy's law.
I had, I got two tents last night.
About what, yeah?
Yeah, same, down the road from you.
It was wet too, too.
Boy, it was, it took a while getting there, didn't it? It's good. Get all, I think.
Hey, good prompt, Steve.
Yeah, the grass is crunchy this morning.
Yeah, once. If it would continue like it started out, if it did continue like that for hour and a half, it'd lay a lot of water. Well, there's, uh, I'm gonna frank. Yes. Kind of anything else?
Make a motion for adjournment?
Say it.
Motion for Wiley, second, now, good. To adjourn, all in question?
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Katie, you have the voucher, Steve? Okay, I've got the bond, I'll bring it down in ten minutes.
Do we divide between the two miles outside Roser and a mile?
I have your agenda on my desk.
Other than, there on this side.
Your husband does work on it.
I think we're like the last one.
Your girlfriend, I'm just.
Yeah, I noticed we don't have copies, list all of the twenty-seven miles. There's it is Roser and Flaprock. I know we couldn't, this is just the one each, but we can. I am. You know what? What you need here? You know why? Because I figured they're rolling this, and I die. I die, at least my family and everybody else, what's going on? I've lived my life, I'm good with God. If it happens, it happens. That's when you do it, man.